Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Strategic Resources Scrutiny Board Meeting. My name is councillor Asgar Khan, and I will be chairing today's meeting. As you know, this meeting is webcast on Leeds City Council YouTube channel, and I welcome anyone watching through YouTube channel. Today's meeting covers some of the key issues focusing on finance and budgetary robustness, both in year and over the medium term. We also look at some important organisational work through a further check of the development of the 2025 Organisation Plan and through a progress update on the Core Business Transformation Programme. Thank you councillor Cooper for giving us the early site of the financial health, medium term financial strategy, and the Organisational Plan Report. We are looking at these issues in advance of the Executive Board on Wednesday, and I think this sports the principle of pre-decision scrutiny and highlights the positive working relationship between scrutiny and the Executive Board in Leeds. I would like to invite attendees to formally introduce themselves, and I will go around the room to my left to introduce, and can I ask the guests to introduce themselves? As I said, my name is councillor Asgar Khan, I'm a councillor for Birmingham, Richmond Hill Ward, on my left.
Morning, everybody. My name is councillor Pauline Graham, I'm from Crossgates and Windmore Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Sharon Hamilton, Maltown and Meanwood Ward.
Good morning. Craig Timmins, and I'm the councillor for Carverley and Farsley.
Morning, everybody. My name is Andy Parham, and I'm councillor for Armley Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Lisa Martin from Roundhead Wood.
Morning, everyone. Councillor Tom Hinchcliffe from Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good morning. I'm Caroline Jolene, I'm the Head of Finance for Business Change.
Good morning. Emma Brows, Head of Business Change for Core Business Transformation.
Hi, everyone. Helen Fallows, Core Business Transformation Team, Lead for HR Payroll.
Morning. I'm Suzanne Hope, I'm the Core Business Transformation Programme Manager.
Morning. Andrew Byram, Chief Digital Information Officer.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Citra Walberton, and I'm the Head of Service Delivery from Integrated Digital Service.
Morning, Chair. Mariana Paxton, Deputy Chief Executive.
Morning, everybody. Councillor Deborah Cooper, I'm the Exec Board Member for Resources.
Morning, everyone. I'm Victoria Bradshaw, I'm the Assistant Chief Exec for Finance, Trades and Resources.
Morning, everybody. Councillor Conrad Hartbrook from Rothwell Ward.
Good morning. Councillor David Blackburn, Farnley and Worley Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Neil Buckley from Old Woodley Ward, and I'm substituting for councillor Stevenson.
Morning. Councillor Billy Flynn from Adler Wharfdale Ward.
Morning, everyone. I'm Rob Clayton, I'm the Scrutiny Advisor to the Board.
Thank you for the introduction. Now moving on to the agenda, can I ask Rob to go through the first five items of the business, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The standard items of business that we take at each meeting. I'll just quickly run through them. Item one is appeals, and there are no appeals on today's agenda, Chair. Item two is exclusions of the press and public, and there are no items to be excluded from the public domain today, Chair. Item three is late items, and whilst there are no late items, just to draw or remind members, there was a supplementary information published last week which relates to item seven on financial health and item eight on the MTFS and Organisation Plan. Item four is declarations of interest, and I will just briefly pause to allow any members to declare any, underlies to council's code of conduct. I shall take silence as non. Item five is apologies, and as already referenced by councillor Buckley, we do have an apology from councillor Stevenson with councillor Buckley attending as a sub-chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Item six is the minutes of previous meeting held on the 14th of July 2025 of the Agenda Pack. Do member accept minutes are true and correct record? I can see some... yeah, thank you. Are there any matter arising from those minutes, Rob?
Thank you, councillor Khan. Yeah, just in relation to minute 19, the papers today pick up on, which, sorry, which relates to the Organisation Plan item, just pick up on some interest in that from board members in terms of income generation and commercial opportunities, that's referenced in today's pack. It also picks up on the Board's resolution to bring the item back within the municipal year. And then on minute 20, just to highlight that the Board request to have more detailed consideration of projected overspends in this municipal year has been acted on with plans in place for the October and November meeting, which will see colleagues from directorates attend to answer more specific service-related questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rob. I think I've lost. Yeah, item, Agenda item seven. Just one second. Yeah. Yeah, going back to my notes here. Agenda item seven is... So, sorry, apologies. We're moving to Agenda item number seven of the Agenda Pack, which also is supplementary information, which is Month Four Update on the Financial Health of the Council. I asked Rob already, mentioned we have now developed a plan for the October and November meeting, looking more details of director overspend, so these updates will feature again in the coming months. Hopefully, that addresses the concern of the Board and members about having services attending, attend to the set of plans for the Budget Management as the year progresses. I understand Victoria has presentation for the Agenda seven and eight, and she's going to do those items together. Over to you, Victoria.
Thank you, Chair. Rob, are you sharing screen? Yeah, okay, thank you. So, as Chair said, we're going to take items seven and eight together, going to do a presentation, and at the end then we'll have time for questions, if that's, if that's okay. So, we're going to cover the month four position, the update, and what we're looking around mitigations and options around reducing that overspend position. And then for future years, we're going to look at the Medium Term Financial Strategy, where we are on the current position, where we've been with key pressures and assumptions within the Medium Term Financial Strategy, and then looking at the options around closing the financial gap that that presents, and also maintaining financial sustainability for the council. And then a quick look at the key announcements that we're expecting through the autumn up to Christmas. Okay. So, I'll carry on while Rob's just up to presenting the scheme. Yeah, no, it's fine. So, in your pack, you'll see in your supplementary papers, we're on slide three now, Rob, please. You'll see that we reported, or are reporting, a 22.7 million overspend. That is a slight increase up from where we previously reported, and the additional pressure was in the Adults and Health Directorate, which is now projecting 12.4 million overspend. If we go to slide four, what that does assume within that 22.7 million is that, as you'll note, be aware, we've got 107.5 million of savings proposals to be delivered in this financial year, which is obviously challenging, and there are some, excuse me, some high-risk areas within that. We will continue to report those to Executive Board and to scrutiny as we go through the year. There are some that are within that position of the 22.7 million that have been delayed. It's not that they're not going to be delivered, it's just taken longer than anticipated. And there are some that are identified in your pack as high-risk areas that won't be achieved. There is one in Adults and Health around income generation that we've highlighted in there. CHNE are, Children's and Families, sorry, are reporting, still reporting a 9.2 million overspend. However, we are doing quite a lot of work around Children's and Families and forecasting where they are likely to outturn. We have, we've got experience of looking at Children's and Families and other authorities to look at the projections and what we can do around managing that and to reduce that overspend down by working and seeing what actions we can take quickly within the financial year. So, that's been undertaken at the moment. CHNE Communities Housing and Environment are reporting a balanced position at the moment, but there are a number of pressures within that area, and the key challenges are around temporary accommodation and the housing benefits subsidy, where, because if we have people in temporary accommodation, we can't claim old subsidy back for them, so that does impact on a pressure for the council. The work within will be further updated, as we've always done, on a monthly basis, so we'll be coming back to Executive Board in October with an updated position and subsequently to scrutiny. There have been a number of mitigations that have been in place for a while now, so the main ones are the restrictions across the whole council around non-essential travel, where we only go to venues and places where we need to attend, we can't do them online. We've had a recruitment in place now for a few years, that's continuing, and we are challenging all vacancies that are requested across the directorates. There are certain roles that are exempt from that, mainly around frontlines, services and social workers, et cetera. There are restrictions on expenditure, so that we only spend where it is absolutely essential around the delivery of services. As I've said, we're looking at the Children's and Families, especially the looks after children, and we've got the independent support around doing that. We have looked at the savings options that were put forward for next year, for 26, 27, and see if we can bring any of those forward and implement them earlier, but that is obviously very, very challenging when we've already got 107 million of savings to be delivered. We have got a capital receipts programme at the moment, which we're reviewing. There are challenges around that to deliver what we require for the current year's budget, but we are seeing if there are any further opportunities. However, if we do outturn around about that 22.9 million, you'll be aware that in the strategic contingency reserve, which we set up for overspends, and the social care reserve, there's only 18.4 million in there, so we would have to go into general fund balances if we don't bring this position down within year. What would that, that would mean, that over the Medium Term Financial Strategy, we would need to re-lemish that, and that's what we would love to do, so that by the end of the Medium Term Financial Strategy, we'd got in our general fund balances 50 million, which is what we'd said we'd do originally, to make sure that we could still do that. As Rob had said earlier, that the Director of Adults and Health is going to attend scrutiny in October, and the Director of Children and Families will attend in November to give you a more detailed update on their financial position. So, if we, that's where we are on the in-year position, which is obviously very challenging. I would say that we're not unique in Leeds. Every authority is grappling with the issues that we are around, adults, childrens and homelessness, and it is a national picture that's been emerging for a couple of years now. But that does have an impact on the Medium Term Financial Strategy, and that's what's being developed at the moment. It's a five-year strategy, and we have moved this year to really align it with the Leeds' ambition and the organisational plan that's been developed, so that we focus our resources on those priorities within the Leeds' ambition, so that we really maximise the resources that we have got available. We're also looking as part of the Medium Term Financial Strategy, which we haven't incorporated at the moment, but obviously we will get more certainty with the three-year settlement that we're expecting from central government in the autumn, which will allow us to have that more certainty about the future, which will hopefully make us more sustainable and financially resilient. The Medium Term Financial Strategy does go into a lot of detail around the influences on our resources and our expenditure within the strategy, looking around what's happening internationally, what's happening nationally with changes in policies, et cetera, and then what is the local impact that we're having that could change the resources that we have available, or the demand on our services. We are waiting for the external auditor's value for money assessment on the council, and we're expecting that that will go to corporate governance and audit in this month, and we're also aware of meeting the requirements around the government's best value requirements. There is a lot of uncertainty around the resources that we'll have available, so the strategy at the moment doesn't assume anything around the government's fair funding review, the business rate reforms, or any of the white papers and the future funding plans for adults and childrens. The reason around that is because there are, it is so uncertain, there isn't enough information out there. There's a lot of modelling being undertaken, but the changes of a small variable can have a big impact, and therefore we don't think it would be prudent at this time to include it into the strategy, so we haven't done. I'll go on to more information around when we're expecting those announcements at the end of the presentation. But what I would say is that we are doing a lot of lobbying, a lot of responses to government, and we're doing that through the core cities, so we work very closely. I attend the directors' meeting, and we go to the deputies as well. As the West Yorkshire authorities, we respond to consultations, and we make sure that we're aligned on those, and then through Sigoma and the Local Government Association, and members are also lobbying central government on the pressures and the demands that we are facing. So, what does that mean? So, based on where we currently are and the information that we know, in next financial year, 26, 27, we are looking at a budget gap position of 101.5 million. Now, that position at the moment doesn't take into account the work that we're undertaking in Children's and Families around their deficiency strategy. Once that work's completed, we will relook at that budget gap, but at the moment, that's what we are looking at across the directorates. It does reduce in 27, 28, but then it does increase in the final, final two years of the strategy, and I'd expect certain authority of the size we have, and I'll go into more details around the pressures, to be around about 40 to 50 million in a, what I class a normal year. So, if we look at the pressures that council and the expenditure increases that we, that we experience, we have the pay award, we've assumed 3.5% across the strategy, which does cost the council around about 17 million. We do see that in social care, adult social care, when we're commissioning services, those inflationary increases, it adds around about 20 million to the budget position, and then because we have seen quite high demand in both adults and childrens, but this position doesn't reflect the childrens at the moment because of the further work we're undertaking, we're adding, and around the homelessness, the increases we're expecting around demand, we're looking at a 42 million increase next year. And then on top of that, we have the normal contract inflation re-increases that we incorporate into the, to the budget, and pressures around the debt budget. So, in total, we'd got 123 million additional costs. We do increase the funding based on the level of council tax that we're raising, the business rates growth, so therefore the net position is 112. When we did the budget process last year, we identified savings for next financial year, 26, 27, because we were doing a three-year savings programme, so that reduces it down to 101, which is where we get that pressure from. Okay. So, as I've said, we've, we've not taken into account in here any of the announcements that we're expecting in the autumn, but we have assumed that the core funding would increase by 3.7%. We've also assumed growth in business rates over around about 0.96% per year, and that our non-collection on business rates would be 1.1%. Across the life of the strategy, we've assumed that council tax would increase by just under 5%, which is 2.99% for general council tax, and then 1.99% for adult social care, and that's assumed across the whole of the strategy. We also cover in the Medium Term Financial Strategy, the HRA, and in the HRA, we've assumed that rental income would increase CPI plus 1%, which we've done for a few years now, and that also service charges. We've made the same assumptions around the pay award, and we've increased the contracts within the HRA where the link to CPI. There is also a capital programme within the HRA, and for next year, we're looking to invest 88.3 million, and the reserves would be 9.7 million for the HRA. There is a deficit on the HRA over the strategy, but they will be undertaking the same work that we're doing on the general fund budget around identifying savings to reduce that down to get to a balanced position. The other area that we cover in the Medium Term Financial Strategy is the Dedicated Schools Grant, and this is funding for schools that we receive. We are forecasting an overspend in 26, 27 of 45.8 million, and that increases each, for each of the subsequent two years, with the overall deficit by 28, 29, 223 million. Now, the pressure is on the high needs block, and this again is something that most, the majority of authorities are experiencing, where we're seeing that the need is greater than the resources that we've currently got through the Dedicated Schools Grant. We are waiting for the white paper that's due to be announced in the autumn around the SEND reforms, special education needs reforms, and to see what the proposals are around the high needs block. What we are concerned about at the moment is that there is a statutory override, which means that this doesn't, doesn't impact on the general fund balances. Once that statutory override finishes at the end of 27, 28, it could potentially hit the general fund, which would mean that we'd have to find additional savings. Government's very aware of this, and we've been doing a lot of lobbying with governments that they understand the position, so we are expecting through that white paper an announcement about what all authorities are going to do about the deficits, but at the moment, it can go into a negative reserve. For the general fund, as I've said, over the next three years, we've got a budget gap of 200 million, with the majority being next year, and the proposal is that we have a new way of looking at the savings programme. We are very much aware that to be able to keep making directorate savings individually is becoming very challenging. It's been challenging for the last few years, and therefore we've looked through the organisational plan around how we can look to right-size the organisation with the resources that we've got available, and there are four major cross-cutting programmes that we're undertaking that are underway at the moment to look at identifying how we can make savings across the council. We do recognise that this is a new way of looking at the budget process and the savings proposals, so we are going to parallel run it with doing some directorate savings, but we are envisaging that the majority of the savings would be achieved through the organisational plan. Now, those four savings themes are around revenue growth, and we're engaging some independent support to help us around this. We're looking at council tax collection, because if we increase our council tax by, collection by 1%, that would generate around about 4.4 million, so it's quite significant for the council if we can really increase those collection rates. We're also looking as part of that through the customer strategy review that we're undertaking, how we engage with our taxpayers more efficiently and effectively to generate more income for the council. There's looking through the planning and development income, so this is looking at the new reforms that are coming through, and seeing if there are any opportunities around increasing the income that we receive through that. And at the moment, I've been undertaking a review of traded services, and we're having an independent review of the outcome of those reviews, to make sure that we're not missing opportunities, that when we're benchmarking with other providers, including the private sector, is there anything that we can do differently to make those more efficient? And then there's some initial discussions around trade ways that are being undertaken. The next theme that we're looking at is around prevention and demand management, and this is across three directorates, so Adults and Health, Children's and Families, and Communities Housing and Environment, and looking at how we can do early intervention to reduce the costs of high-cost placements later in the, somebody's journey within the social care environment. We're also looking at, through looking at the integration of the whole family view, so that we look at the whole family rather than the individuals within that family, and seeing if there's more efficient ways of delivering those services and to help people earlier so that they're more independent, et cetera. But on top of that, we're also looking at those cohorts of people that we've currently got in social care, and looking around how we provide services that they require, again more efficiently and effectively to meet their need. So, the first part of the theme is around the diagnostic, to understand what are the common drivers across the cohorts of people around mental health, domestic abuse, addiction and homelessness, and then looking at how we can more use technology to provide those services and to really get some robust data on the profiles of the population. The third theme is around locality working, and we think this is less about delivering savings, but more around being more effective around how we work with our localities, and looking at a more place-based working methodology, where we would also focus on where the demand's coming from, a more leaner service provision, and looking at integration across those different services. As part of those, delivering those services, we would look, we're looking at our estate, how we have some core buildings, buildings to deliver our services from, and having more flexibility of the use of those spaces, which would enable us to rationalise our estates, and having more fit-for-purpose facilities. And also working with our citizens to enable them to be more empowered, and doing that through community power and influence, and working with the third sector and our community committees. To also have a strategic creativity and connection at all levels through the Leeds City Ambition, the Leeds Ambition, sorry, and to learn from what we've undertaken, to enable us to grow in what we're wanting to do, and to test those assumptions that we've made, and to do that through democratic engagement and influence. And then looking at our data and how we use our data to drive those decisions and to allocate our resources to those priority areas. And then finally, as part of the organisational plan, we're looking at organisational efficiency and effectiveness, and again, this goes into three different groups. So, first of all, more strategic approach, looking at our services that we provide, including those statutory services, and seeing how we can perform and increase our productivity across those, those services. We're looking at the And we're looking at the commu- the customer strategy and we're being supported by K P M G around that. And if there's any, um, savings that we can, can drive through that, that work that's been undertaken. And also to have a rolling programme of review so that we look at across all services that the council provides. The next part of the organisational efficiency and effectiveness is around spans and layers. So we've done this at the senior level and we're looking to do that across all levels within the, um, organisation. So that we right size the organisation for the future. That'll help us with workforce planning and also, um, staff development going forward. And then finally, looking at, um, artificial intelligence and how we can enhance, um, what we use digitally. Um, which will hopefully reduce, um, our, um. Our resistance to some of the change that we experience as we, as we upscale our staff to be able to use that more effectively. So those are the different areas within the organisational plan. And as I've said, there's, um, obviously going to be the directorate savings that will need to identify as well as that. Um, but it will be subject to the announcements that we get through from, from central government in the autumn. And then as we move into two thousand and twenty seven, twenty eight and beyond those years. We would be looking to direct our resources to, through the Leeds, um, ambition. And that organisational plan to really drive that, that change that's coming through. So through the autumn, we are expecting, um, a number of announcements. The first is the policy statement, which will hopefully give us more information around the fair funding review. And the reset, the business rates reset. We're expecting that now at the end of October, early November. And it's been announced that the autumn budget will be announced on the twenty sixth of November. Um, which means that we're not expecting the provisional settlement now until the week before Christmas. Um, which means that, um, which will be after when we will have had executive board. Um, which will be on the tenth of December. So, um, we are looking at when, when we'll be reporting that provisional settlement. Because that will give us the firm numbers for the next three years. Okay. Now, I know I went through quite a lot there in a short space of time, so it's, um, just open to questions now, please. Thank you.
Do you want to turn your mic off, Victoria? Yeah, no. Uh, thank you, Victoria, for the presentation. Very comprehensive, should I say. Uh, and, uh, before I open to board members for any questions or comments. I would like to ask if councillor Cooper wanted to add on, onto this item.
Thank you for, um, the opportunity, Chair, but I think Victoria went through quite, um, eloquently, uh, very detailed. Um, around these items, so, um, I'll be happy to take questions from the board now.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or question from board members, please? Firstly, can we deal with the question on the financial health report, please? Any questions? Councillor Timmins?
Uh, just, just one. I had a few, but, uh, you've answered them as you've gone through. It was a, a pretty comprehensive explanation, as everyone said. Uh, just on the dedicated school grant. Uh, so I, I understand we're loaded deficit on that. But at the end of the period that you mentioned, when we no longer have that. Do we then have to pay that deficit back?
As, as statutes, um, currently, um, is in place. It means that, um, we can have a deficit reserve. If we didn't have that override, we wouldn't be able to have a deficit reserve. So every year you'd have to fund that from the rev- from the general fund budget. So we'd have to make additional savings to make good that deficit. Because we've got the statutory override, because central government recognises that there are significant pressures in the system. They've enabled us to carry forward a deficit budget. Now, we've never had a deficit apart from this, this year was the first year. Um, so yes, in, if that override doesn't continue. And if governed, government doesn't given, give us, um, any additional funding to cover the deficit. It will fall to the revenue budget and therefore we'd have to make that level of savings.
And if that happened, would we have to pay all that deficit back at once? Or would we be able to kind of spread it out over a period of time?
Unless government, um, say we can spread it at the moment, how it stands at the moment, we'd have to pay it all back in one go. Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Timmins. Any more questions? Councillor Hartbrook, please.
Thanks. Um, the presentation and also the background report has a huge amount of really, really, really good detail in it. Um, I've got one question and one ask. And it's really good to see there's a lot of, um, or some stuff in there around demand management and mitigations and. Not coming from a sort of procurement background, it'd be really handy to sort of see what the delivery. Because obviously, if, if it's successful, we'll see a demand that is less than otherwise it would have been. It'd be good to sort of see in, in reports in future, um, once those initiatives start to take effect. What the, if we'd done nothing, we'd have had this. And I know it's, that, that it then becomes, that becomes the guess because you don't know quite what it would have been. But you can sort of, to sort of, so to, we can report on the effectiveness of those mitigations versus, you know, in effect doing nothing. Um, the other bit, which I've seen some of it sort of through the reports. Um, because we talk a lot about savings and clearly, you know, savings are, are, are needed. Um, I'm, I'm really happy to see stuff in there around increasing revenue in certain ways. And I think that's something as a council often, we don't think and think enough about, you know. And I, I think things like, um, it's somewhere in the, in the supplementary information around the pay as you feel at museums. And, and I'm really keen to, you know, I would hate for our council to become like centre parks where. You, the, every, every time somebody does something, you try to pull money out of the pocket. But I think at the same time, the opportunity to, where people are spending money with the council. To ensure that they're both getting good value for money, but also, you know, we, we look at it from a, a business perspective in terms of actually, how can we? Um, I mean, it's a small, it's a small, it's a small point and in the scale of the deficit is, is, is tiny. But one example that sort of, uh, hit my world is in Rothwell, we're really lucky to have a, a series of really good. Well run, highly profitable, well reasonably profitable, um, cafes. And one of them was, um, I was talking to them and I mentioned, I pulled out the example of the tiled hall cafe at the art gallery. Because over the summer, a couple of, a couple of, last year, I went a few times and it's like, oh, we haven't got a coffee machine today. We haven't got this, we haven't got that. And I asked him, I, I asked Terry, who runs one of the local cafes in Leeds in Rothwell, to go and just come, give me a professional opinion. And he went and it was closed. And when he asked why it's closed, he said, oh, we've only got two staffing out of three, so we're not allowed to open. And that disconnects between him as a business that if he doesn't, if he doesn't operate, it doesn't exist. Versus sometimes I think how we kind of run where it's like, well, yeah, but it's run a, run a different, different kind of model. I think it'd be. Good if the, um, those, those sort of pressures to kind of bring revenue in, I felt at the various stages, uh, more than they are.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, just on the first part around the, um, forecast on the demand and where we actually are. In the M T F S, there are some graphs trying to show projecting where, where we would be if we did nothing. And then where we would be if, um, where we're forecasting demand will be. What we, what we can do is, uh, is track that then to say where actually we are, which, um, is a good suggestion. So thank you. I think the other one is that, um, on the fee, on the income generation. That was where we recognised within the organisational plan that we did need, um, a theme around, um, income generation. And we do review the fees and charges, um, on a yearly basis around are there any further opportunities? Is anybody else doing something that we haven't? And that's where, um, the pay as you go, um, came through. Um, we are undertaking a review of our traded services. And we've started with, um, within civic enterprise Leeds at the moment. Um, and there are certain cafes in there. Once we've undertaken those reviews, we'd widen it out then to the other trading operations. So those, those cafes should learn by both the private sector and other, and other local authorities. To see if there's things we can do differently to, to make sure that we at least wash our face if not make, make, um, a profit. So, um, those are part of tho- those reviews that have been undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Councillor Cooper?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and, uh, and thanks for the, the questions, councillor, uh, Hartbrook. Really relevant, I have to say. So, um, just for, uh, some examples really around the demand management and the monitoring. I chair an oversight board for both, um, children and families and a separate one for adult social care. Um, and I'm sure you'll be able to ask them when they come along, uh, maybe, uh, about some of that monitoring. But also, um, there is some, um, forecasting, uh, around what that demand might well be. And, uh, looking at previous years and then, uh, to see if there's a trend so that we can, um, uh, kind of. Uh, ha- you know, guess really how much that demand is going to be. But it's extremely difficult in terms of, um, care because you're dealing with, you know, vulnerable people, vulnerable families. Um, and you can never quite, you know, it's not a perfect science, I suppose, um, in terms of that demand management. But if we can, uh, at least be between the, um, you know, in a, in a guide between a, a number, uh, would be useful. So there, there is some of that work going on as well. Um, and quite right about, um, increasing revenue. That is something that we need to do. If we've got, um, a deficit that we need to, a gap in our budget that we need to make up. We ought to look how we can increase our revenue in the appropriate way, uh, for our residents. And, um, and you pick on a really good, um, example around that in terms of the cafes. Because, um, there are different models of, uh, how we do that in Leeds. So, uh, some are run by parks and countryside, some are run by civic enterprise. Um, and some by, um, uh, you know, uh, the culture side arts and, uh, museums as well. So actually having, um, a better look at all of those, uh, things in the round. Uh, could give us, um, you know, some increased revenue. I know that some of our cafes, for instance, are contracted out as well. So, um, I think the tiled hall used to be contracted out. I'm not sure whether it, it still is, so it's, it's not actually us that, um, that run that, that cafe. Um, so, you know, we, we need to look at it all and find out exactly where we are. But I think there is opportunities there we, that we can explore further. So thank you very much for your questions.
Uh, thank you, councillor Cooper. Mariana, do you want?
Yeah, just to quickly echo, uh, what's been said. We, we are guilty of using savings as shorthand often in slides. There'll be a footnote that says this does mean revenue as well. And we have had enterprising in our language, probably, I don't know, ten or twelve years, something like that. Because we've wanted to encourage people to be enterprising. But we are also mindful that, um, that needs to be affordable as well. We don't want any unintended consequences. Um, from any of that that we do, or indeed, you know, kind of different impacts on different parts of the council, you know, sometimes happens as well. So it is one that can look easier on the surface than when you delve into the detail. But as Victoria said, it's a fairly significant part of our programme. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mariana. Before I bring councillor Martin in, uh, you can answer these questions, Victoria, together with mine and, uh, councillor Martin. The fair funding consultation featured in July's meeting, when do we expect the outcome for that? And I'll, uh, I'll, um, councillor Martin, do you want to ask your question as well?
Yes, um, I understand, Victoria, why in accounting terms under the H R A. You show council house sales as, as income. Um, um, but just reflecting on the actual cost of, of the sale of council houses. With the demand that we've got, the increasing demand on our services caused by homelessness. Um, is there, can you please assure us that some clear information on, and, and data on the cost of right, rights buy? Which is effectively tying one hand behind our backs. Where, um, on the one hand, we're, we, we've got that statutory duty to look after homelessness, homeless people, obviously. Um, against that duty to comply with right to buy. And, you know, the predicted sell off of six hundred pounds, six hundred council houses this year. And just thinking about within my own ward, round Hay Ward, where we've got very few council houses now. But you can see that stock is now owned by private landlords who are charging much higher rents. And obviously, that trying capturing what landlords are charging us. Um, as a, as, uh, with the statutory duty to, to house. I'm not being very clear here. I'm jumping all over them, but do you get what I'm saying? Um, the cost, um, to the council of, of rent, renting those, um, once council houses. Back off private landlords, um, and getting that information to our exec member for housing. So she can use it effectively, um, to influence, um, government policy on housing going forward. Sorry, that's a lot, isn't it? Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Um, just on the first, um, question around the fair funding consultation. And the policy statement should give us, um, which will be announced at the end of October, November. Should give us, um, a better idea of the direction of, of travel and, and how robust the modelling is that we've been undertaking. Um, but actually, we won't know the actual impact for Leeds until we get provisional settlement, which will be in the week before Christmas. Okay, just on the right to buy the six hundred, um, per year, that's what we've averaged and what we expect to happen. Um, as you've said, we've got no control over that. If somebody applies, then, um, it is in their gift to be able to buy the property that, that they've lived in. What we do have is there are clauses so that we can buy it back. So if they come to sell that property in the future, they have to give us first refusal on buying that property back before they send, sell it, um, on. Um, but there is a cost to the council because of the revenue loss that we have. But we do have a housing programme in place around building, um, council houses. But we can't, we can't build them as quick as the demand's increasing at the moment. Um, but I will feedback to, um, the chief officer of housing around, um, the information that they provide to the exec board member. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Finally, I've got councillor Hamilton and then we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, my question is regards the freeze on recruitment agency and overtime, which we've had in place for a very long time. So my question is, um, how is the freeze? Oh, sorry. What savings have been achieved through the freeze on non essential spend to date? And, um, how is non essential spend being defined and monitored across the service? And one last one, I think I have, uh, I've got, I've got twelve, but. How is the freeze impacting service delivery and staff across the department? I'll just ask those three because I've got, um, quite a few. But you are really concerned about staff, really.
Yeah, so the freeze, as you've said, has been in place for a number of years. Um, and we have developed it as we've gone through those years around having those exempt posts on the critical frontline services. To make sure that we can recruit to those areas so that we're not having an unintended consequence of having to have agency and overtime. And that's part of the assessment when the posts are brought forward. Whether it's a statutory requirement that we have numbers of staff to deliver the service. Um, we also review whether there are income generating posts. So if we didn't have that post, we wouldn't be able to generate the income. So we would release those through the recruitment freeze. It isn't ideal and we don't want to continue with it because we do know that staff are under significant pressure through workloads, et cetera. Um, but we are in the current financial position that we're into. And we are, um, having to make hard decisions, which is ultimately having an impact on staff. What, what we are, um, looking at is how we start to release that in the next financial year. As we, as we move through the latter part of this year, so that we can start recruiting. Once we've got the organisation at the right size that it needs to be to deliver services. So, um, as I said, it's not ideal. No, none of us wants to be here, but we're, we're well aware of the impact that it is having. Um, but unfortunately, we've got significant pressures across in those social care areas. So it's a really difficult balancing act that we're, we're doing at the moment. Um, on the non essential spend, um, I haven't got the figures in front of me, but I can get, get you them for the last few years that we've had that in place. When we set off on the non essential spend, we went through line by line the expenditure that we have that's not staffing. And we identified what was critical in delivering. And we identified what was critical in delivering a service and what was classified as not. So things like travel, training, supplies, et cetera, to keep those down to a minimum. If it wasn't required for delivering the service. So if it is required to deliver a service, then we could spend, we have the expenditure. But if it's, if it wasn't classified as that, then it was frozen. As we've gone through the years, obviously savings have been made in those areas. So the amount that's actually non-essential now is minimal. But we still keep that freeze in place just to just to make sure that we can can make every saving that we can do. So it's noted in the ledgers around the different. I don't know what they used to be called vote codes, but they're the subjective codes. So so to say what the different types of expenditure is in there. Noted that we we make sure there's no spending in those areas. But I'll get you the figures, but it will be diminishing over the year.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you, Mariana. And thank you councillor Cooper for answering those questions. The recommendation are on page 17 of our agenda pack in relation to the financial health paper. I suggest we deal with those before we go on to questions on the F, MF, MTFS and organisation plan. Are we happy to approve? Yep, thank you. So we can move on to agenda item eight of the agenda pack. And are there any questions and comments for this on the operational? Plan?
Thanks, Ashgar. It's it's really covering the the last item on on this particular one. And I'm conscious that we're still waiting for information on on the budget and the white paper later in the year. Not to mention the three year sort of settlement. And just before I say anything, it's not a criticism at all. And I'd just like to compliment Victoria and her team for the management of the financial gap that we've had over the last couple of years. And I think we've got a bigger job coming up over the next four or five years. This new organisational plan, is it going to be looking at both statutory and non-stratutory services within the council? In other words, every single aspect of work that we're doing. And when are we likely to have more information as a board on what that plan is expecting to do and what the timetable is going to be? Calling out, I've got a few more questions if you can follow on from that one, but perhaps if you could take that one first. Mariana?
Yeah, thanks councillor Flynn. Yes, it does involve a look at statutory and non-stratutory. I mean, this is a really difficult area because, you know, obviously we've got to fulfil our statutory obligations, as you know. And no, well, I don't know many, many members of staff, if any, or many, any members who come in to do a bad job. Or to not do the absolute best that they can with the people that they're serving. Whether that's, you know, in a cafe bar or whether that is, you know, providing services to the most vulnerable people in the city. So reducing any service levels down to a very, very bare statutory minimum is difficult territory. And and also it's quite subjective. But it's, we have definitely got that as another, to have another look again and make sure that, you know, we are only providing services to a statutory minimum level. But I don't want to sit here and pretend that is easy. Because, you know, I don't think it is at all. But yes, it's definitely in. And in terms of time scales, as I think Victoria tried to outline, what we're doing, this fairly intense work for the next kind of eight weeks or so to inform the initial budget proposals that will come in September and that will go through the normal process in terms of engagement. You know, there'll be December's executive board, there'll be the usual kind of private and public scrutiny meetings on those proposals. So that's where the detail will come through councillor Flynn.
Do you want to come back?
I've got a few other things, if that's okay. Yeah, thanks very much indeed, Mariana. The organisation plan is linked to the Leeds ambition and the, you know, the medium term financial strategy, which seems a huge sort of programme to me, given that the, I mean, the Leeds ambitions only just changed. It's linked to the NHS 10 year plan. And I think that's a relatively ambitious, you know, sort of programme, just on that sort of particular 10 years. The medium term financial strategy is is a much tighter period than that. We're talking about up to sort of 31 or 31, 32 or 30, 31. We had a 63 million pound increase in the gap for next year. Between the last time we had the medium term financial strategy figures and this month's. The DSG overspend is looking at 85.5 million by 28, 29. I think the cumulative deficit is 223 million. I assume that includes the 25, 26 year. And if we could have a little bit more information on what what's likely to happen about that, because that's clearly not getting any better. And finally, on the section 188 notice that was issued last December, I think, regarding a possible loss of 242 staff. You cover that very briefly in the in the last comment you made. But if someone could give us an update on that, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
I'll start and we'll do a double act. So in terms of Leeds ambitions, NHS 10 year plan, yeah. The very much we want as an organisation to do the very best that we can for the city. I don't think anybody, you know, would disagree with that. The Leeds ambitions is new, but it is, it's a refreshed best city ambition. So it's not all completely new. We want to be the best possible partner in that that we can be. And we want to encourage all the other major institutions in the city to be a partner in that as they, you know, lots of people do do that already. There's, you know, it wouldn't particularly come to this board, but the work of the anchor institutions, for example, is really key in terms of employment opportunities, procurement, et cetera. So that there's loads, there's so much to say in that space about the Leeds ambitions and our role in relation to it. But we, you know, we do think it's right that the city has a very ambitious plan and that the council does as much as it can in relation to the Leeds ambitions. The NHS obviously is in, you know, there's, there's a, you know, big state of flux, I guess, is perhaps the best way to describe the NHS with the various changes that are happening nationally between DHSC and NHSE locally in terms of the ICB. Going to get any more three letter abbreviations in there. Sorry if I'm talking in acronyms, but I think everybody knows what they are. And obviously, the adults board is, adults and health board is having a look at those changes in much more depth than we would do here. But clearly, there are financial implications of that that we're working through. And, and, you know, we'll know more when we get the budget, the policy, the budget later on in the year. And when we get our settlement about what any of those issues will be. You mentioned about, you know, five, six and impacting on six, seven. It will, I think Victoria outlined that in a presentation and how it might impact in terms of the use of general reserves. Once we've exhausted strategic contingency reserves, Victoria might want to come back in on that briefly. And then the section 188, we would normally review the section 188 at the time at which we take the initial budget proposal to December executive board. Because it's at that point that we'll have done the work to understand the savings proposals or indeed revenue generating proposals and the staffing implications of those. And it's at that point that we would work with trade unions and we would update the section 188 notice with a new set of numbers in relation to that for the next period.
Victoria, do you want to come back?
Yeah, so if I just build on that a little bit around the significant increase in the budget gap position that since we did the last MTFS. And we're always, as councillor Cooper said previously, it is really difficult to forecast demand going forward. And even though we look at trend analysis and look where we think the numbers are going to be going. Like last year, we had a complete change in the number of older people who were living in residential care. It it completely changed where we'd seen for the last 10, 15 years. And that caused us significant pressure. So we're always forecasting, but it's like having a crystal ball. Certain things can happen internationally or nationally that can completely change where your forecasts are going. And that makes it so difficult to be able to to undertake. Although we do do our best based on the data that we've got available and comparisons across. We have seen significant increases in in social care. And we've also now seen that increase in the homelessness that we'd had and experienced previously. And that has caused the increase that we've seen as I went down through the analysis. On the dedicated schools grant, it does include the 24, the 25, 26 position in that deficit over those years. What we are doing or undertaking to do is we've done with the general fund is looking at mitigations and a management action plan that the director are working on at the moment. To look at how we can manage that position and look at how we provide those services and whether we can do that differently to try and reduce that cost base. But as I said, this is a national issue that government recognises. And that's why we're waiting for the white paper on the DSG to see what comes out of that and what changes will be made to policy, which will have an impact on on those deficits going forward. Okay, thank you.
Just briefly councillor Flynn, yeah.
Always brief, Ashgar. Looking at the number of high risk or the potential high risk failures in some of the budget plans for this year. The £101 million next year gap is likely to increase fairly substantially, isn't it?
The savings plans where the high risk, I think there's only a couple that won't be delivered. The rest are delayed. So it's just taking longer than we'd expected to get the delivery of those savings plans. So by next financial year, I would expect those to have been delivered, even though they're classified as high risk in 25, 26, just to get financial years right. But we're monitoring them on a monthly basis to make sure that we're on track for delivery of those. There are a couple, for example, the one in adult social care, which was around income generation. When we did the forecasting this time last year, we were seeing the trend of the income increasing. And that's why we built that as a saving proposal for this year. That actually hasn't come through and we're not expecting it to come through as people are hitting the threshold of how much they contribute to their care, et cetera. We're probably at that top now. So that that one won't be delivered. And therefore, the directorate are having to find alternative savings to make that shortfall. And that's in line with the revenue principles that are agreed at full council each year as part of the budget.
Thank you councillor Flynn and thank you, Victoria. Did you change, digital change is going to be a key delivery in efficiency? How will we ensure that the service is embracing digital change and using the new platform we develop?
Are you referring to the AI mention in the old plan? Yeah, I think we updated last time I came here. So there are a number of issues with AI that I just want to set out at the front. There is a budget for AI. It's a cost, so it's not free. We need engineering source to sit behind it with an IDS to support it. We need officer digital skills. I recall the last scrutiny board councillor Flynn raised this, where we need to raise the game of digital skills across the service. Another one that's come out recently, which we're looking at with PACS is the procurement challenge around AI. This this technology, this tooling is advancing so quick. You wouldn't go into like a five year purchase of this. You might only buy it for a set period of time and it might have already been advanced by something else. So we're trying to work through what that means for us. We've put in place governance steering groups policies to make sure we're ready for it. But as part of the empower work that's mentioned, we're now, there's a piece of work in there around effective engagement with staff to get them used to what we're going to be doing in terms of trying to embrace use of AI. We've got some particular areas where we have got trials going on in adults and children's with some copart licences. We're looking at things like policy buddy, which is being used elsewhere in across government, which is showing some efficiencies. And we've got some examples around things like digital note taking, which we we think will provide a saving for some of our social care staff where it will automatically update into the system. So I would say we're very much on the start line here, but we are working our way forward. And I want to be reasonably tentative to say it's not going to be the panacea and delivers the savings like you're seeing on the spreadsheet that Victoria shared, but it definitely will help us to achieve some of it.
Thank you, Andrew. We have covered a lot there and there is clearly a lot of work being done and still to do on these issues. Before I close this item, is councillor Cooper, do you want to add anything on this item, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to to just come back in. And and as you've seen from Victoria's presentation and officers' responses to your questions. Today, we've brought a very, very detailed number of items, two items today on the financial position of the council. Both in year and also for the next five years. So and and for me, it actually shows how transparent and open we are as an organisation bringing this information through to scrutiny. And indeed, it will be at executive board as well on Wednesday. Usually, these items are first related through executive board and then they would come, be reported to scrutiny. But as the information was public already for executive board, it really felt right that we could discuss it at scrutiny board today and then take your views and comments through to executive board on Wednesday. It really shows how we work better when we are open and transparent and can have these discussions in public for for both scrutiny and executive board. Thank scrutiny board members for their questions. And also, I hope that scrutiny board are satisfied with us making the changes to the financial reporting to scrutiny. So for areas of overspend, where the directors are overspending, that those directors come to scrutiny and are there to answer questions. As in the past, that's been an issue for some members in scrutiny here. Even though those directors went to other scrutiny boards to to answer questions. But but actually, when we're talking about the finances and the overspend, it's quite right that they come here to answer those questions as well. So hopefully, we're moving in the right direction with our reporting through to scrutiny board. And therefore, I can tell executive board that.
Thank you councillor Cooper for those comments. And can I thank Mariana, Victoria and Andrew for answering those questions? Are we happy with the report on recommendation on page 22? Yep, thank you. So we now move on to agenda item nine on page 27 of the pack, which looks at our core business transformation. This is really important area of work as we look to modernise our back office systems and embrace the new technology to improve our effectiveness and deliver efficiency. I believe Suzanne's got some slides and introduction she's going to do, go through the report. Over to you Suzanne.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, the report provides you with a really comprehensive, I guess, update of all the work that's been undertaken over the past two years to implement, you know, two major key systems. But I have got a presentation really that just pulls out the key points and the the summary, rather than go through obviously all the all the detail in the in the report. But that's obviously all there for for your information. So the vision of core business transformation, just to revisit this, has always been about modernising the ways of working through use of modern digital technology. Good practice processes that reduce effort and cost and make it easier to do business. And that's always been the vision and that will continue to be so. But that has been enabled by what has essentially been the past three years or two years, a technology refresh that can drive continuous improvement in those ways of working and ultimately support delivery of the finance procurement and HR strategies and plans. So this isn't about kind of a standalone project, you know, this is about delivery of those plans and the strategies. And the overall strategic goals of the programme, again, these were, have always been, were defined at the outset and continue to remain so, which is about equipping staff with the right tools and the knowledge and the digital skills. And that corporate and central roles add value to frontline. So they can provide that value added kind of services. And we we automate more of the routine processes. And that managers and staff are more self sufficient with direct access to data and systems. So again, currently, you know, they have been reliant upon. Having filling in forms and sending emails, having other people enter data into these systems or produce information for them. Where enabling staff and managers to become more self sufficient means that they've got access to things like. Reporting dashboards and they've got access to these systems directly, which reduces reliance on corporate staff. That we have fewer systems and that they are seamlessly integrated and that they talk to each other and seamlessly pass information across. Rather than having, um, having to duplicately input information from one system to another. And that they have more mobile flexibility, so people can access them on mobile phones and mobile devices. Um, and obviously enable that more hybrid working. And that managers are in, sorry, Rob, can you just go back one, it's just a bit too quick? Uh, that managers are unable to undertake faster and more well informed decisions. Because they've got direct access to information and that relating on, you know, business partners. Be it finance business partners or H R business partners crunching data through spreadsheets on their behalf. They can do, have direct access to information so they can make quicker decisions. And also we can have improved compliance because we've got better validation built into systems. So that's always been the vision and the goals of the programme. Next, please. We've put this in to to help demonstrate, I guess, the complexity of the of the implementations that we've just completed over the last two years. We did take, obviously, consultancy advice before we embarked on the implementation of a new finance system and payroll system. They are incredibly complex systems to implement. And that was borne out in the conversations that we had with consultants who 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 did agree. That in a large organisation such as this council, that there would be the most challenging and complex I T projects that an organisation will do. That was also borne out by conversations that we had with other councils that had embarked upon the same project. Um, to varying degrees of complexity. But again, there's just, I won't run through all that list, obviously, you can see there that in terms of the volume of the transactions that go through these types of systems. You know, in some cases, it's tens of thousands of transactions, in some cases, it's hundreds of thousands of transactions. So that on a daily basis, you know, there's thousands of transactions being run through these these systems. So even when you just take these systems down for one week to cut over from the old system to the new system, you immediately create a backlog. Um, you know, when you're talking of ten thousand transactions a day. Um, so this is why, you know, that that big organisations don't embark upon these. Implementations any frequently, you know, than than once every ten years, once every twenty years, because it's incredibly complex and incredibly disruptive. So we knew that when we embarked upon it and obviously did what we could then to to mitigate all the risks that we knew. Um, and and the issues that we would inevitably get as a result of changing over these two systems. Next, please, Rob. So the key achievements so far, so we have implemented two out of the three systems and we are about to implement a new, the third system. Um, in October. Which are the three real key cornerstone systems of any kind of, you know, support service arrangement. And we have implemented them on time and in budget. Um, and again, conversations that we had with another, a number of other councils that have done this. You know, we don't want to underestimate just how. Um, how difficult it is to do that with these kinds of systems. And I'm pleased to say that, you know, hearing leads that the team implemented on time and in budget. In terms of the new H R and payroll system, we rolled it out to thirty one and a half thousand users, that includes all the frontline staff as well. Uh, who didn't have previous access to the H R payroll system. And actually, nine out of ten members of staff. Um, are now using and successfully logged on to the digital system. And work is ongoing just to get those, this final number of staff. Um, enabled. So we have enabled self service for all staff, including interactive pay slips. Uh, and automated a lot of processes around that and taken away all the, you know, the manual inputting. Um, and all staff have got access to those automated processes, but like I say, so. All staff have got access to the system and it's just a matter of now of those final remaining staff is getting them logged on to the system. Um, and inevitably that those staff are the ones that are just hard to reach, you know, they're out. Sort of mobile paroxet type jobs or they're not particularly digitally skilled. So and need more time and effort to get them on boarded. We've got in system forms and in system questionnaires, so a single access and a communication channel for all. So just a couple of examples of that, the staff questionnaire. We weren't quite there, I think, in time to do it for everybody this year. But next year, there's there's probably no reason why that staff survey couldn't be done through one channel. Uh, which is that self service channel where all staff could access an in system questionnaire. Uh, and it'll eliminate all that manual effort that's currently involved in sending out paper forms, manually accumulating all that information. So that facility is there and it's about the services now exploiting that facility and exploiting that technology that is there. And again, a single communication channel for all, all staff part of the self service facility in the payroll system. Uh, there is some news items. Uh, and again, that is a channel by which all managers can reach their frontline staff. As well as office based staff with communications and we're just having talks, Emma's having talks with the comms team. About making the chief executive's message that he issues every week. That now could be made 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 available easily through a single channel to all staff through self service. So these are the channels that we're now making available to make it not just give people pay slips, but also communicate with staff. Because the digital divide isn't just about the digital tools, it's about that information divide as well. Um, so having a single channel where you can communicate with all staff is really quite powerful and really quite cost effective. Uh, new and improved and easier to use recruitment systems. Uh, there has been an issue with our previous recruitment system in terms of management, you know, managers haven't found it easy to use. So we've replaced that as part of the H R system. Um, and just make it easier to use for managers, so again, people can schedule interviews and. Book interview times all in the system as opposed to all that being a manual, manual processes around it all. An automated onboarding from a candidate status to an employee status used to be all very manual. Uh, lots of, um, you know, recruitment admin staff updating systems. That now will be a seamless digital process. Automated alerts and reminders, so we've, um, in terms of sending out reminders. Uh, to managers, be it end of probation periods, you know, be it sickness reminders and trigger reminders. A lot of manual effort went into that in terms of producing reports and sending out emails. All that now will be automated in the self service system. And managers will have access to staffing data through the dashboards. Terms of the new finance system that we've rolled out to three thousand users. Uh, self service for common finance requests, so payment requisitions or creating a new creditor is now automated processes. Again, that was a very manual process where somebody ended up having to do it. You know, on behalf of staff outing services as a manual input, that's all now automated. And we have developed some Power BI dashboards. Um, they're in their infancy. And it's just finance staff that are currently using those, but the plan is. Uh, is that once we know that they are working robustly for finance, that we can roll those out to managers across the services so they have direct access. To finance and budget information themselves. Alleviating the work on corporate finance business partners who who inevitably have been involved in crunching the data manually through spreadsheets. Um, improving compliance through having predetermined fields such as the V A T field, which improves consistency. And again, that's very much green shoots in terms of proving the concept about having better validation. So we'll be looking to how we can use that better going forward in other areas, which improves compliance. And improved scrutiny income processes. Um, and and the benefit of that really is that the quicker you can raise a bill and a charge for somebody and the quicker you can get the bill out. Uh, and the invoice out, then the quicker you generate and get the income in. So that ultimately improves income collection rates. So as part of implementation, we've been able to achieve. Um, you know, some really good improvements and some really good automation, but we are only at the beginning of our journey, really. Um, and there's there's obviously much more to come in terms of ongoing continuous improvement. Rob, next, please. Now, inevitably, with putting such a huge systems and complex systems in, it's inevitable that we will have bugs and issues, which we have had. Um, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that overall it has been incredibly successful. I'm proud to say, I'm proud to obviously say of the team as well, that the whole team have worked incredibly hard. Uh, you know, there's been hundreds of people working on this project. Um, and overall, it has been successful. We've maintained the integrity of the budgets, we know other councils have struggled with that. Um, suppliers are getting paid, staff are getting paid and income is being collected. Uh, so again, you know, uh, not to underestimate that any disruption to those key processes. Um, you know, can cause chaos in some instances, but, you know, we've been overall successful. Notwithstanding that we have had some interruption and some examples of where we have had some issues. Um, but they are being resolved and if we haven't resolved them up to press, then they are improving. So we have had some delay with the initial BACs payment, both to the staff salary payments. Um, we nearly had, um, you know, the 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 salary payment did get there on time. Uh, but the initial one, we did have some problems and we, you know, it looks like it was going to be delayed, but thankfully the team worked hard to make sure it wasn't. Um, some orders were missing with on the data migration, so there was some delays to some suppliers with payment, but those have been resolved. And we did have some system integration issues, which again ultimately mean that some suppliers received late payments. Uh, but again, those have been resolved. We still have some issues that the team are working through. Um, user access and permissions hasn't been as good as we would have liked it to be. So again, that's that's interrupted really, I guess, the flow of some of the processes. Uh, some staff haven't had access to some of the transactions that they needed, so we're working through that and that is improving. Backlogs of work due to the downtime. Um, and due to the volumes of work that we deal with, that is improving. And some processes still require some manual intervention as a workaround where we found little bugs and issues, which has increased. Obviously, the workload and the pressures on some staff. Uh, and we're having to revisit some of that design, but that is improving as the team work through the list of things that just need tweaking. We have had some delays with processing some invoices. Uh, due to the backlogs of work, due to some issues. Um, with some of the processes and and some of the system not quite working as we thought it should work. But again, that is improving. Uh, and some disruption to some processes, uh, which has ultimately ended up with some suppliers getting late payments. Or some invoices for some income collection being issued late. Um, so there has been some disruption, but overall, you know, things are working well. Next, please, Rob. In terms of training and communications, the team did an awful lot of work around this. Uh, again, it it was put, the the strategy around training and communications was purposely designed. To drive digital ways of working and self service in terms of training and comms. Um, and and to develop a user community so they could support each other. You inevitably get users who are quick to pick up on these kind of technologies. And are keen to learn it and get there very quickly in terms of being able to use the new technology. And we wanted to set up a user community where those who were quick to get it helped others who weren't that quick to get it. Rather than just relying on central support teams. Um, so we've had things like Teams channels. Um, and we've had, um, you know, online learning sessions and drop in sessions, champion groups. Um, and, um, staff, you know, helping each other. We've had online trainer led sessions and demos, but also recorded and online training videos that people can revisit. Because often it's not uncommon with these kind of go lives that you train people. But there it's only in real life when they're using the the system. Do they then need to revisit some of the training because it makes more sense to them when they're actually using it? As opposed to training people before you go live. We've had frequently asked questions, online guidance notes, the Teams channels have already mentioned and drop in sessions, and we aim to continue. To deliver the training, um, but be it more user centered, be it more about what is it that people specifically need to know to do their job? Not just a generic, you know, training. So we're going to continue to develop and deliver the training plans as we go as well. Uh, over the course of the next six to twelve months to improve knowledge. The previous system had been used for twenty five years, it's very ingrained. Deep rooted ways of working and habits that we kind of have to unpick and and retrain people to do things differently. So it takes time to do that. Next, please, Rob. So in terms of the next phase. Implementing these new systems. You know, there's, it's often, it's it's a misconception really that, you know, you go live and that's the end of the project. You know, you go live with these new systems and it kind of gets you out of the gate in terms of improvement and continuous improvement. So we've always had a three phase program with core business transformation. The first phase being focused on implementing the new technologies. Um, and the second phase is really about bedding it down, bug fixing. And getting it working robustly and ironing out all the problems and the snags and the issues that you inevitably get. And then it's about planning how we can continuously develop. Um, and continuously exploit the systems to make sure that we get the most out of it. And harness the tools and all the, um, the full suite of Microsoft products, not just the systems themselves. But now how we can harness things like Copilot and artificial intelligence and these other Microsoft tools and products that are available to us. Um, and also implement the additional H R modules that we haven't implemented yet. We focused on H R payroll, there's still health and health and safety and there's still learning and development to implement as well that as well that we need to prepare for. So, uh, we're just coming out of phase one and we're now coming into the second phase of what is a three phase program. But it's always been a minimum viable product approach. Um, make sure that we go in live with all the existing functionality and then we continue to build on it and continue to develop. And continue to improve for perpetuity, really, you know, the the benefit of cloud systems and the rate that digital solutions are developing now. You know, there will, there will always be something new to be able to develop and exploit. Uh, so we come to the end of the implementation and in truth, now start of our transformation. We now need to start looking at all our business processes. Um, quite in detail is really getting down into those level of details of where we've got to look at all the hundreds of business processes. And really look at how we can digitize those processes and how we can make them more efficient. And we're now developing a roadmap. Um, that that will focus around how we continue to improve the system. How we can continue to develop the reporting and the dashboards. How we can develop the new integrations that there'll be with other systems. And, um, and undertake and and develop an approach really for for reviewing all the processes. Reviewing all the ways of working so we can really automate everything that we can potentially automate. Think that was the last one. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, for excellent presentation on the report. Uh, before I open to the board members for any questions or comments, does your guest would like to add anything? Up to board members, any question, councillor Hartbrook, please?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I'd like to start off by offering huge congratulations, I mean, I've worked to a number of. I T and other system installation projects over over many years. And the fact that this has gone, well, A, the scale of this is huge. Uh, but B, the fact it's. But B, the fact it's gone without causing any, let's say causing any headlines is no mean feat. So yeah, so massive well done. I've got two actual questions to ask. One, obviously, there's a lot of these systems that are being introduced are well known, tried and tested, you know, I try and Jagger etc. To what extent as a council have we taken the vanilla product rather than customising it? Because as you know, when you start customising and tweaking things, that gives ongoing legacy on costs and complexities because you've got a bespoke product. So I'd like to understand, just in general terms, need to two details, to what extent have we just taken the the commercial off-the-shelf product rather than bespoke it to our perceived needs? And two, obviously, you know, with IT systems, you've got, you know, big data, you've got lots of money, you've got lots of people, you've got lots of personal data, GDPR issues and so on and so forth. To what, and when you're moving from one system to another, you know, we see in the press regularly too often around risks around your cyber hacking and invasion and people kind of either infiltrating or exfiltrating data from systems. I just wonder what level of assurance you can give that we haven't, well, where we have had the vulnerabilities, they've been identified and mitigated against. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your appreciation. It's much welcome. In terms of the customisation, I think it was one of the benefits, certainly with dynamics. There's two different, because obviously we've implemented two different systems, one for finance and one for HR payroll. And I guess it's so two slightly different approaches. But in terms of dynamics for finance, one of the reasons why we chose that product was because it is highly flexible in terms of how you use it to meet your needs. So you don't, and we were very mindful of, and that was borne out through the implementation partner in that making sure that we chose an implementation partner that would really help us keep us on track in terms of avoiding customisation. And what we have done is enhanced the product and used the Microsoft tools to help us enhance the product to meet our business needs through use of additional tools such as the power apps. So, you know, you can use these tools to develop additional forms and addition workflows without actually touching the core product. Because I think certainly with a finance system, what you need to avoid is making sure that you do not, you know, you absolutely do not touch the core essence of the product that is moving all the money about. So anything that came out in terms of the business needs that looked like that that's kind of what we were edging towards, our implementation partner certainly made sure that we did not do that and gave us advice to make sure that we didn't do that. And that there are other tools that we can use to make sure that we met business needs without customising. So we have enhanced it and we have developed it but using the tools available within the wider product suite, rather than customising the core product. And I think certainly in terms of HR payroll, do you want to take this Helen, something Helen understood?
Hi everyone. Yeah, our HR payroll systems, I-Trend is from a company called MHR. And we did have assurance as we worked with them through the design phase. Because this is a big project for them and their consultants were asked back at their organisation, what are leads doing? Are they taking on best practice advice? And the answer was yes, we were. And that was important as well because our terms and conditions are complex. There was a lot of configuration needed, but we weren't going to add to that or steer away. It is a system used by 40% of other councils, but we are one of the largest. So it was important for us to stick to the best practice to limit the risk for us.
Yes, Victoria.
Can I just add to that? When we set up on this project a number of years ago now, we had some key principles. And one of the key principles was that we would adopt what we were purchasing and not adapt it because we'd learnt the lessons from other local authorities who had adapted what they'd got. And then it caused us all other sorts of issues. And that was something that we were quite clear and we set up governance so that if there was any changes to be proposed, then there had to be agreed by that group. And to be honest, there was minimal.
Thank you, Victoria. Mariana?
Yeah, I mean, Andrew might want to come in on the kind of information governance stuff as well. But just to add, I mean, the team have done a really good job on this. And Victoria, in and amongst other things, has chaired a project board that's had in particular people like information governance on councillor Hartbrook. So that, you know, in at the design stage, we were building safeguards in. Internal audit have also played a key role in terms of that assurance. We have invested in this project. I think it's really important to say that. We've had subject matter experts who've come in from the relevant professions to make sure that as it's built, we haven't done it on the cheap. And I think, you know, we're seeing the benefits of that, that we have invested properly. So I actually would also say to us, there's quite a lot of learning from core business transformation about how we do all the things in the organisation that are major of this scale. We have done lots of communications. It's been right in the, you know, the kind of psyche of all the senior team in terms of making sure that we were leading this as transformation and encouraging everybody to play their role. As Suzanne said, we're not all, we're not, it's not there completely yet. And there are some areas where we've struggled to get that full engagement and we're still working on that. But, you know, it is one that could have been very, very different. And it's because of a lot of effort that's been put in and appropriate judgements about level of investment, I think, that have made it. So, and we've had good support from members on this, which we have appreciated because it's not necessarily that sexy for the public. But actually for us running as an organisation, these systems are absolutely the bedrocks and foundations. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, Mariana. And Andrew, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, because come back in on the question around cyber. And as I've stated in this meeting before, whether it be a public forum, I don't want to go into specifics and I'm happy to brief you offline councillor Hartbrook if you wish. But, you know, cyber is the bedrock of the IDS technology of our tech strategy. And we've got a big focus there on cyber preparedness. We're just about to put together some training at CLT and some business continuity plans of testing our processes there. We've also got some mandatory staff training, which we're about to push out to all staff. Because this is such an important issue, you've seen what's happened with Jaguar Land Rover, Harrods, Co-op and others. We're also about to go to market for a security operations centre. That's where we'll bring a partner in that will spend all the time going through, looking at logs for us and alerting us where there's something that we need to address. Plus, we're also addressing staffing in the IDS cyber team. We've had an amazing 480 people applied for two cyber apprentice roles within IDS. They're across the other, we're recruiting five in total across the service. We've had something like 1140 applications from young people wanting to join IDS, which is, you know, fantastic. So we're doing it from several angles, staff training, staff preparedness, working with the corporate team around ensuring we've got proper business continuity plans in there. But then also beefing up the team and bringing a partner in to work with us.
Thank you, Andrew. Last year, we did talk about the expected saving from the programme. How will these be captured to show the benefit of our investment?
When we, at the outset of the core business transformation programme is. Sorry. When we were at the outset of the core business transformation programme, we said that we didn't envisage any savings to be made immediately because we were changing an old system, as Suzanne said, into a new system. We wanted to get the like-for-like foundations right. As we move forward now into the next stage, as that is where as part of this work, we'll identify where efficiencies will be made and savings could be generated. So that was why we didn't identify any cashable savings in. But the benefits have been identified of having up-to-date robust systems. And both in, as Suzanne said, the benefits around staff communication, staff being online, being able to access everything easily, being able to make decisions informed because you've got the information in front of you in real time, et cetera. And that's where we currently are. But as we go through the improvement plan, that's when we will identify any savings that can be made from this.
Thank you, Victoria. Councillor Buckley?
Thank you Chair. Firstly, I'd just like to echo what councillor Hartbrook said about the fact that this seems to be a very impressive programme of improvements. And it sounds very impressive and I only hope it goes as well as it sounds. But the point I wanted to make was on page 61, Equality, Diversity and Integration Action Plan. I just wondered how much of this is statutorily a duty and how much isn't? And following on from that, could we make savings here by doing either less of it or none of it?
All right, just bear with me one second while I find the page on the report that you're referring to.
Just while Suzanne's looking for the detail. I think probably the bulk of what we've done is statutorily required because it's the requirements of us as an employer in terms of understanding the nature of our workforce. But let Suzanne pick up the detail. And we would see it as a positive opportunity to, you know, make sure we're valuing our workforce like you'll hear at the next session in October, that we're listening to our, you know, colleagues in terms of staff satisfaction results that we'll have on the next session.
Sorry, could you just repeat the question for me?
Well, on page 61, on the Equality, Diversity and Integration Action Plan, there's quite a lot of it there. And I just wondered, is that a statutory duty? Or is it something which is, we could do without if we so desired?
Or maybe try. Obviously, we're a good employer. The Equality Act of 2010 does place responsibilities on us. I guess these are mainly actually because we want to do these things to ensure that all of our employees get equal access. If we didn't do these things, then the risk would be that we wouldn't be treating a group of employees as favourably. And then we might face claims of disproportionate treatment or discrimination. So I think when we look at how we were doing this programme and engaging with our staff, we want everybody to benefit. And within that, we highlight areas where there may be that we need to take some extra steps to ensure that everybody's included. But if we weren't to do it, then yes, there would be a risk to the organisation.
Thank you. And next on the list is councillor Flynn.
Thank you. Just a couple of things really. I just wondered if the delays that were experienced when the finance transformation sort of took place have now been got rid of in the sense that it was taking weeks and weeks and weeks to get a simple MICE payment through. And we were constantly told it was because the new, you know, finance system was working its way through the system. And secondly, the family of schools that I meetings I attend tell me that they're having similar problems, or they were having similar problems, I should say, in slowness of response and basically taking forever for, you know, what used to be a relatively quick job to happen, taking much, much longer now.
Thank you. So I'll just briefly to discuss the issue on MICE payments. So when we were aware, obviously, it was raised that the MICE payments hadn't gone through as we'd expected. When we looked into it, what we discovered was that there were two issues really. One was obviously it's a new system. When those payments were processed, it wasn't, some of the things weren't processed quite correctly. It was a new system, so people hadn't recognised that. Unfortunately, there was a lack of visibility. So when colleagues went back to check whether things had gone through correctly, they couldn't see that things hadn't gone through. So what we've introduced moving forward is we've increased the visibility. So we've increased a secondary report that so people can go back and review and check that payments go through. Because obviously whilst it affected the MICE payments, there's a risk that it's affecting other payments as well. So we've put steps in place to improve on that in the future.
Just on that one, I mean, just recently I had two £500 payments of MICE duplicative payments. Actually went out within a week of one another. I never really got an explanation as to why that happened, if I hadn't picked it up, but I've been £500 down.
Okay, I mean, I can take some details and we can have a look into it. Because obviously we need to ensure that processes are in place where that can't happen. So we can take some details and review processes again.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. On the engagement and the support for schools and school users, aware that as with others, there has been disruption for them. We've endeavoured to support them through all that. They've had access to the drop-in sessions, recorded training, specifically tailored guidance and FAQs for them. This is the same sort of step-by-step guidance and resources. We have recognised that obviously people have a break over the summer and then they need to come back and be refreshed. The team have been holding bespoke sessions, individual sessions with individual schools to help them work through some of the issues they've had, recognising that some are quite specific to specific schools. So we have really tried to respond to the feedback we were getting from schools, pick up on that and work through those issues with them. So I'm hoping now they're feeling much more supported and in a better place with the system. And I've been keeping in touch with the learning team in children and families as well to help make sure we're picking up on any issues they might be having. So like I say, I'm hoping all that work that we've been doing will help them to feel more confident going forward.
Thank you. Do we anticipate any further needs for additional funding for this programme?
As part of the future phases of the programme and in terms of continuous improvement, I think there'll always be a need for ongoing investment in terms of the time and effort from officers, both in finance and HR payroll and obviously IDS colleagues. We do have teams within IDS who help develop and, you know, look after sort of day-to-day support for the systems, but who are also able to continue development of the systems. Part of the implementation involved knowledge transfer to internal staff to undertake further development. So the idea is that as we continuously improve the system, it will, it is an ongoing investment, but an ongoing investment of internal staff and particularly IDS staff to continue to develop new integrations, to automate processes. So yeah, it's kind of the nature of cloud systems. You have the supplier who will release new features and improvements. And obviously, they generally come through on a quarterly basis. So you always have to make sure that you are aligned to be able to receive these new updates. You know, things will need continually testing. And some of the updates may mean that there's some new features that we want to take advantage of that means we can do new, you know, new digitisation. But also then, I think there's the day-to-day maintenance as well and day-to-day development that we identify as a business and as a council that we want to be able to digitise our processes or review processes. And particularly in light of ongoing savings plans and ongoing plans for digitisation and more digitised ways of working. Then in order to achieve that, then it will require ongoing investment.
Thank you. Next, Victoria? Next, Victoria, sorry, you want to come in?
Yeah, just to clarify, when we, on the core business transformation, when we implemented the new solutions, we'd always said that it was about continuous improvement so that we didn't want to implement a system that we've done all this hard work and stand still. Because otherwise in 20 years' time, we'd be where we are now with the current financial system and where we'd got to with the HR systems that we weren't at the forefront of the technology to enable us to work as efficiently and as effectively as we want to. And therefore, as we go through the journey, there will be always the general maintenance which Suzanne talks about, but we had that with the other systems and you have that with every system. When you want to develop it, depending what that development is, will depend on the level of investment that we'll require and we'll take a judgement call at each of those points on whether we want to undertake that investment or not.
Victoria, next is councillor Timmins.
Thank you Chair, I've got four points, but they're all quite succinct. Just in terms of, you were talking a bit earlier about the news channel and getting information to employees, you referenced Ed's Weekly Report. This is all good, but how do we manage how much information and news we're putting on there? Just to give an example, is I know that if I'm getting lots of notifications from a certain app or lots of emails from one organisation, I start ignoring it. And obviously, if it's something important, we don't want employees just to scroll past it, oh, that's not going to be important. So getting that balance right, so how do we manage that? Next one, talked about peer support in terms of helping people skill up in terms of digitalisation. You referenced MS Teams channels, drop-in groups. And I'd just like to know what the uptake was on those and whether people were coming forward and using, using them. In terms of moving forward, in terms of business processes and how we can digitalise them, I probably mentioned this before in this group, but I think there's a big opportunity in terms of our assets around the city, got some great assets and we're not always maximising how much we're using them. If I think of civic halls, libraries, things like that. And are we going to be looking at a platform moving forward where we can book online and if someone can't get the venue one, we push them over to another one? I think it would make things easier from a customer service perspective for people who might be interested and in turn improve revenue growth. And the last one I just wanted to touch on, it's not really a question, it's more a comment, is on EDI. I'm just disappointed that councillor Buckley's left. I think those of us that sit in this committer permanently and sit on the committee, particularly when the staff networks come, that have a big focus on EDI, understand why it's important that we engage them on everything that we do, because it improves productivity from employees and it makes a happier workforce. And I just don't understand this ideological attack on EDI when economically, as well as values, it benefits us.
Who's going to pick up those questions?
I think we'll have a team effort on answering those questions, if that's okay. I think in terms of the news channel, I mean, obviously we are picking up with the corporate communications team in terms of how we can best use those news channels. The idea is, I mean, they don't, initially, we won't be sending out alerts and obviously flooding people with lots of information. It's about, there is the facility to have a number of news channels, a number, a number of news items within, within the system. So the idea being that when people are going to have a look at their pay slip or they're applying for annual leave or they're submitting an overtime claim, that there's some news items that are scrolling across the top of that, of that, you know, the landing page. So we can, and I think the trick is really is about just limiting it and focusing it on a number of key messages and not using it as a, you know, as the channel where you push absolutely everything out through there. And that'll involve, obviously, MS team working with corporate communications about what's appropriate to push through, you know, the, the staff self-service system and how, you know, the, the frequency of how we do that rather than, and we don't envisage kind of sending out lots of notifications to everybody, because as you say, it gets sort of lost, lost, you know, in a, along with everything else. So that's still work in progress and we'll pick up with corporate communications around that. I think in terms of the peer support, Emma, do you want to talk about the, the activity that was on the channel, because that was something that your team dealt with?
Yeah, in terms of the peer support, the finance system in particular, yeah, I've, I've been really pleased with the way people have taken that. Like we've said earlier, some, some people naturally are more curious and get more involved than others. We've seen those people sharing and helping other people as well. So in terms of that, that community, you know, we've shared the knowledge, we've shared the training and that's created a lively environment for people to find support and to help each other. And we've got over 800 people in that community now, which is, which is really good considering the number of users. So yeah, really pleased with that. We've also seen a similar sort of thing, but not online, with colleagues out in frontline services, where they've been helping each other. We've got, we've identified in some places the people that were sort of most keen or quickest to, to take things on and giving them a bit of extra support and then they've been able to go out and help others as well. So yeah, so, so I think that, that response from the majority of colleagues has been, been really great.
Yep, sure. And I'll just mention recruitment briefly because we actually went live with our recruitment module last August in 2024, the only customer ever to go live with recruitment before Core HR and Payroll, so it was unique. We had our reasons for wanting to do that. But it meant that we pushed it out initially to a group of around 100 nominally called resourcing officers, but people in the services who would take on that recruitment administration activity on behalf of their service area. And then we pushed out the recruitment module to all managers when we went live with Core HR and Payroll in April 2025. But we've kept that community of resourcing officers going, so we've got the teams with them. And that means that those colleagues who had already got eight months' worth of experience using the recruitment module have been able to assist those other recruiting officers in their services. So they first go to those resourcing officers and if they can't help, they then post through for the central team. And that's been working really well and is valued. And we've had feedback from other colleagues who've worked on other sort of systems saying, you know, that has been a really good model of support that they've seen and different from how we've done it in the past.
I think in terms of your question about business processes relating to booking, you know, booking assets and buildings, that's not within the scope of core business transformation. However, I do believe, and I'll have conversations with those that are involved in the customer transformation programme, which I believe is probably where it's more likely to be picked up in terms of digital processes to enable the booking of rooms and assets. But certainly, as Mariana mentioned earlier, there's a lot of learning, I think, that that programme can learn from us in terms of our approach and the tools and the technologies that we've been utilised. So there'll inevitably be, I think, some crossover, I think, in terms of learning. And I'll, I'll take that point and I'll feed that back to that programme if that's okay. And I think in terms of your point about EDI, I think that's one of the benefits of this programme and particularly giving all staff access to digital tools to enable them to directly maintain all their own information. Traditionally, it's been a challenge to capture, you know, information and equality information about staff, particularly, you know, obviously, the challenge has always been about the processes to capture the information from frontline staff in particular. You know, it's a very manually intensive, onerous process to be capturing a lot of information. But if you can make that easy for people, to enable them to do it through their own mobile phone, and it's a 30-second piece of work, so they can update their own personal information, it means the council has got access to much more comprehensive information about, you know, characteristics to enable us to ensure that we are providing, you know, better information and better services to our own staff. So I think that's how the core business transformation programme certainly contributes to that agenda.
Thank you. Councillor Hinchcliffe?
Thanks Chair, and thank you for this report. I mean, it's, it's a really pragmatic and professional piece of work, but in that sense, I share councillor Timmins' view on, on the comments about inclusion before, because if we're looking at this in a pragmatic fiscal sense and we're looking at savings in the medium and long term, including everybody and making sure all staff and employees can access these, these new digitisation and equipments, will actually save us money in the long term. So it's really is a shame to see ideological dogma fueling some pragmatic discussions in this committee, but it's something that we're sadly becoming used to from the other side sometimes. Transparency is key on pay in particular. You did mention the 90%, I think, had signed up to the, or had got access to the digital payroll and digital pay slips. Are we noticing any patterns in, and sorry to say inclusivity again, on age, grade, salary kind of nature of work? Are we noticing any patterns around who hasn't been able to address and get hold of this equipment? Because you touched on the hard-to-reach employees, but I still think the digital skills gap does need addressing at some point and that is going to save us money in the long term. Thanks Chair.
Yeah, I'll pass that question to Anna, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have detailed data on who has logged in and where they're from and, and which areas. There's, there's an element across the board of people who for some reason, small numbers who haven't logged in and the job is to engage them and like we've touched on, make the content that we've got and they're engaging beyond the pay slip, because maybe that doesn't change. In terms of those, those sort of hardest-to-reach people, we, we do know the areas with the largest numbers, they do tend to be, they are really predominantly frontline, more dispersed, part-time contracts, all the, 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 I suppose the characteristics that it's not a surprise really, maybe they're not as engaged, you know, with the, the sort of corporate life of the organisation, if you like. So that's why we're working really hard with those service managers who are also very keen, for all the reasons you've said, to, to adopt the system. Some of the issues are, I suppose, interest relevance to them, which is why in this next phase, we'll, we'll, we'll go out to colleagues and explain a bit more about how, how it's relevant to them and what it can bring them. And that's based on research we've, we've done over the years with these colleagues to, to understand what they are interested in. Some of it is to, to do with, I suppose, capability in terms of whether that be a disability or digital financial wellbeing. So we're working with the relevant teams, so where we identify people who will benefit from adjustments for them to how we're working, then we can implement that. And we have done so for colleagues that have come forward so far. So without customising or changing anything, there's a lot we can do to help people to, to access the systems. So yeah, like, like we said, we've, we've had around 14,000 people logged on so far. We've got a little way to go, but we are getting into the, the, yeah, harder-to-reach people, shall we say, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think on, it sounds like there's, there's a skills gap which has been addressed and the, and the financial aspect of it too, but a willingness as well. But I'd say to those that aren't so willing, that when you're on a private, a part-time contract or casual work, it's actually probably more important that you have access to your pay slip in a timely manner, because they've probably got other sources of income and the tax kind of complications that come with it. So maybe just something to bear in mind, but I don't need an answer on that one. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton?
Well, everybody's leaving now Chair, thank you. So I will ask all my questions. I just wanted to reply to councillor Buckley, but councillor Timmins and councillor Encliff has addressed it for me really. And with regards to the equality, diversity and inclusion and integration, I think the other thing that is missing is race equality. Race equality needs to be embedded in all these policies. So, but I won't bother to ask a question because everybody's getting ready to go. I will leave it for November's meeting and I will ask those questions there.
Thank you. Has those comments been added into your notes?
Yes, we've got those comments, thank you.
Race equality throughout.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, you know, your questions and comments this morning. And I'd like to thank Suzanne and your guests as well for answering those questions. Before I bring in councillor Cooper, I just would like to say, will you pass our thanks to your team who have worked behind the scenes for, you know, bringing the digitalisation and changeover for us at the council? And just on the EDI, I think it's really important, the, you know, councillors need to come to our staff networks when they do present the representation and the importance of the EDI plays within our workforce. And as my colleague already alluded, I think it's really important that we want to make sure, give the opportunities to all the staff working for least the council and, and then by, as councillor Timmins says, it's the productivity from the staff and the efficiency. And also we will get the value for, for our money. And I will ask councillor Cooper, before I close this item, does she want to make any comments?
Thank you Chair, and thank you to scrutiny members for your questions and comments around this important piece of work. I just want to share my thanks to Suzanne and the team for delivering this huge, huge, massive system change that we've had. And that's ongoing. This is going to be ongoing for, you know, some time and with the least amount of impact. We always know when, when we make such big changes as this, that there are always going to be some teething issues that, that we're going to need to iron out. But I feel very confident in the team that they have the first iteration of any problem occurring, they've been on it really quickly and overcome whatever they've needed to overcome during it. So, and I know they've had quite a few sleepless nights and long hours and, and they've really put their heart and soul into this work. So I really do want to give them thanks for, for all of that. If I can just, and I know they've answered all your questions around the, the core business transformation, but just to let people know, it's not just about digital change this, this is about whole change in terms of our processes, how we approach things, what we do and the learning from this will definitely be taken forward to other changes that, and transformation that need to be taken forward in the organisation as we've talked about previously. I just want to give some reassurance to scrutiny members and not just them that are sitting around those lines, but the, the members that are sitting here, who I know are supportive of the work that we do in this council around equality, diversity and inclusion. It is really important to you as scrutiny members, it's extremely important to us as an administration. And as Mariana said, we are an equal opportunities employer, but we've got a priority as this administration around equality, diversity and inclusion. You've had, come to your board many times, the staff networks, and we also work with our trade union colleagues around a lot of areas that, that sometimes impact groups of people, you know, who have protected characteristics, that they may be impacted more by some of this change. So in the report that you get, you get in a report the report that you get, you get in a report, in every single report, we have an EDI section within that, that that will outline any impacts that it may have on on our ambitions around equality, diversity, inclusion. That includes race equality, councillor Hamilton, even if it's not, you know, outlined in that, it does include race equality as well. We will continue in the face of some calls from some political sides around getting rid of equality, diversity and inclusion. I would just say, not on our watch, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cooper, for those comments. Members, are we happy with the report on recommendation page 28?
Yep.
Yep, thank you. We can now move on to the final agenda item, which is the work programmes. Guests are welcome to stay for this. But if not, thank you for attending this morning. And thank you for your contribution. And I will hand over to Rob now.
Yes, thank you, councillor Khan. Yeah, just to highlight, this is the work programme we consider at each board meeting. Appendix one has the latest draft of the work programme for members to comment on. And appendix two provides the latest executive board minutes. Just to highlight a few changes that have occurred. So we've shuffled a few items to be a bit later than they were originally programmed. So just to highlight that. And then there's a new item, which actually relates to discussing just now, with the the staff survey, in fact, coming back, coming till both October and then in November, the November one being a bit more detailed look at how, from from it through an EDI lens, really, at those staff and how their feedback and how that's been taken on board. So that is part of the plan for November. I think that covers it, Chair. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you, Rob. Any comments or questions yet, councillor Hinchcliffe?
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. Just ahead of, this is probably for the November meeting now, based on what Rob's just said, on the grievance practice review and the staff survey outcomes, when it does get to that detailed kind of area where we're discussing it, can we make sure that we have proper data broken down by service and by department, but into, really important into the services, I think, because we need to see how that differentiates from the rest of the council. And if there's any departments affected, I think last year, when we discussed it, there weren't that much detail into the actual services. So I'd be grateful if we could communicate that with them ahead of time.
Hey, Rob, do you want to come back?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Yeah, absolutely, councillor Hinchcliffe. So really, that second item is more down that type of that direction of travel, really. The first item, I think, will be a higher level review, just, I think, really based on time to assess the responses that we've had. So maybe in October, you might have that concern. But I think hopefully it'll be addressed by November, and I will feed it in following that comment as well.
Thanks. Yeah. And just on the grievance practice, grievance practice review, does that apply to that as well?
The grievance practice review, yeah, I can feed that in as well, yeah. So that's for November. That that's been in development for a while now, as you may have noticed. So I will speak to John Ebo about that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments on the work programme? No. Councillor Parham?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to basically reiterate what we said when we were in closed session, about the possibility of looking into the long-term strategy of the council, taking into consideration the demands of an increasingly, a growing city in terms of population and demands on on resources. I don't know if that can be introduced.
Thanks, councillor Panam. Yes, I will take that away and scope it if and through through the chair, if I could perhaps drop you a line as well, just to update you on how and and how we might bring it forward to the board. Because I think there's a little bit of work just to, with colleagues, just to scope that and get a a a report that fits within our remit. But I do I do think it's certainly a possibility. So thank you.
Is that okay, councillor Pan? Yeah. Thank you for, thank you, everyone. Are we happy with the report on recommendation page 73? Yeah, thank you. That brings us to the end of today's business. Thank you for your attendance and your contribution. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, 13th of October at 10:30 AM, with our pre-meeting starting 10 AM for the board members. Thank you.